Twenty twenty-one, I will just happily announce this is my forty-first wedding anniversary with my wife.
Hey.
Yes. With that wonderful honor, we'll call the meeting to order and go right into public comments. We received one public comment which came in from Elizabeth Mondello. Did I pronounce that correctly? And I will read it. Let's see. So, "Dear Eastline Board of Education and Superintendent Newton, I am a parent of an Eastline student. I've been watching the board meetings since last year and have several issues I have comments about. First, I would like to say, I think, Board Member Barry Shackley's idea of bringing in more opportunities for students to develop careers in the technical field is a great idea, and I would like to hear more about this project. Second, I noticed in the discussion to remove the Student Welfare Policy fifty-one forty. This policy states that students may not be questioned or interviewed by non-school people without the permission, without parent permission, or staff person present. It was stated that this policy is duplicated everywhere elsewhere. However, no examples were given. I would prefer this policy continue to stand alone and to give it full weight and clarity. I continue to speak out against the equity audit for the school districts. My objections are even stronger now that I have seen their presentation at the past Eastline Board of Education meeting. I do not agree with allowing a for-profit company into our schools. They are financially incentivized to discover issues with students and staff. Their M is too small, and they won't get statistical proof of anything, just some antidote. There was no questioning of their methods or expertise. There was no demand of their questions to be submitted beforehand for approval. Polling and interview questions are of very complicated science. Leading and leading-type questions are a big problem. There is no attempt to have a counter-agency with expertise in this field to examine their methods and results. It is a waste of taxpayer money and time. Thank you, Elizabeth Mondello." And that's the public comment that we received for this evening. Okay, so with that, we have some minutes for approval. We have the minutes from our special meeting, which was a public hearing on February twenty-second. Anybody like to make a motion on those?
I'd like to make a motion for those.
Any moves? Anybody like to second it? Eric, you second it? Okay, Eric seconds it. Any corrections, modifications to those minutes? I have to now pay attention to the Zoom screen too. So, okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? I think Candace abstains.
I have to just read them.
Yep. Okay, so we have another set of minutes, and that was our February twenty-second regularly-scheduled meeting of the Eastline Board of Education. So, would anybody like to make a motion on those minutes?
I would like to make a motion for those minutes.
Okay, Jamie, second. Eric seconds it. Any corrections, modifications to those minutes?
You can look here at ten minutes.
Oh, no, I can. You can see it? I can see it, yeah. Seeing none. Yeah, my reading glasses on. I have to look over him, so. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Everybody abstained? Everybody was there, so.
Yep.
So, those minutes are approved. Special reports. I see our selectman representative, Dan Cunningham, is there. Hi, Dan.
How do you do? Good evening.
Good, good. Some things to share with us?
Just, you know, we've, of course, I'm sure you know, we've been busy reviewing the budget, trying to make some meaningful suggestions for the Board of Finance, trying to balance the interests of the taxpayers, of course, and the needs of the town. So, as I know you well know, it's an arduous task, and we've done the best we could to offer, you know, some suggestions to the Board of Finance, and we did, we passed the budget onto them, and that's pretty much what we've been embroiled with for the last month or so. So, that's where we're at, and that's my report.
Great, thanks, Dan.
Any questions for Dan for our selectman representative? Nope?
No.
Okay, seeing none. High school, Eastline High School student representatives, I do see Grace up there. I don't see Sashi.
Hi, Grace.
Hi, Grace.
Yes, Sashi is at practice right now, but I have a few things I can report on. So, students and teachers are a little bit apprehensive about going back full-time, but overall, the students seem pretty excited about being able to go back full-time, and their purifiers in the classrooms have been a stress reliever, I think, for students and faculty, just to have a little bit more peace of mind to know that everything is taking, that we're doing, that schools are doing everything that they can do to ensure students and faculty's safety. In addition to that, service clubs are still continuing their work. For example, National Honor Society just had a beach cleanup last weekend, and Spanish Honor Society, it's using its money to donate goats to families in underdeveloped countries and to donate to COVID release funds. In addition to that, a Viking saga was just released this week, and there is a wide range of articles in the Viking saga, but one that stuck out to me the most was titled "The Conversation Over Racist Microaggressions Toward Asians, Toward Asian Sparks in a Deca Club," and it also referenced the Martin Luther King Advisory Panel. And this article just demonstrates that the panel had such a lasting impact on the students and that students really want to facilitate these conversations to ensure inclusion, and they want to have active conversations and be advocates for inclusion. In addition to that, winter sports have been going pretty smoothly. ECC tournaments are supposed to start next week, and even if it means going virtual for some sports like indoor track and boy swimming and diving. And lastly, students have just finished picking their courses for next year and are pretty excited to continue with everything and know that this year they're able to get the best education they could in preparation for their classes that they're going to take next year.
Great, Grace.
Great.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any questions or comments for our high school representative? Thanks, Grace.
Thank you, Grace.
Okay, let's see. That brings us then into our discussion action for the evening, and the first one that's up is for discussion on the Eastline Public Schools twenty-twenty-one COVID-nineteen update and phased-in return of the students. Jeff, I assume you're...
Yes, started off, and then a couple other folks are going to chime in. First and foremost, we were trying to get some virtual staff and students to this meeting, but two reasons we're holding off until the next meeting on the twenty-second. One being, it's our first meeting kind of back on-site, so we wanted to make sure everything kind of works, and it seems like, you know, this is going to be okay. And then the second reason, we had a couple of folks that couldn't make it to this meeting, so they can make it on the twenty-second. So, I know that came up at the last meeting about, you know, hearing from some of our ritual, you know, kids and staff, and so they'll be coming on the twenty-second. So, just wanted to bring that forward. Also, I attached all of the slides, so, you know, the elementary middle school, the high school, we just got, you know, that last week. So, all of that information's out there. It's on our website as well. I think, you know, strong response, you know, obviously for returning our kids. And, yeah, we're trying to work and do it, you know, in the safest manner possible. There was a little bit of cost to that, which we'll talk about in just a minute, but I just wanted to make mention of that. One piece, and vaccines too, I mentioned prior to the start of the meeting, vaccines seem to be going very well. We did survey our staff on Friday and got a very positive favorable response of many people, hundreds that have gotten in and have been able to get their first vaccination, either appointment or shotgun, which is good. So, that helps immensely as well. Pertaining to returning all students, so everybody has the dates, the high school, you know, parents have been notified, everybody is aware of all the dates. The next round of students coming back will be next Monday, a week from today, and so we'll have grade two and half the middle school. And then the twenty-second, all high school, you know, will be returning, so the week after. And then the twenty-ninth, we finish it out, and then April fifth, as we are aware, we'll be back five days a week. The Wednesdays, when we're back five days a week, we're modifying a little bit to really kind of allow students to adjust, kind of bring forth that SEL component. Jason and Deb are here. They're just going to talk for a brief minute about what that Wednesday is going to look like onsite when we're back five days a week, because we're just tweaking a little bit. Deb or Jason, you want to start us out just with a little bit of information on that Wednesday?
Sure, I'll go. The high school is going to go to an eight-block Wednesday, so this kind of brings us back to where we started the school year, except instead of a half-day, it'll be a full day. We're going to do advisory at lunchtime, which means the kids will have an opportunity to meet with their advisor for kind of a third of the time, a third of the time they'd be at lunch, and we're working on trying to work out the details of giving them a little bit of access to possibly do some club meetings and stuff during the rest of the time. We decided on eight blocks because it would give teachers an opportunity to have a third contact time with the kids in one week, and especially with, we're feeling like relationship building and getting to know each other and all of those pieces, a little bit of extra time with their teachers is going to be really helpful. We also, this gives us a little bit more time with advisory for SEL stuff, and kind of looking forward to it. I think that the teachers at first were a little, like, thirty minutes isn't a long time, but there's a lot that can be done in thirty minutes, especially as we transition to, you know, coming back a hundred percent and trying to support kids both academically and socially emotionally.
It'd be good to keep that advisory every week now, yeah, which is the SEL components.
Thanks, Deb, for the update. Was there any thought or what was the thinking between going to Wednesday eight-block versus just going back to the old-school, every other day, block A, block B, or whatever it was in the past? What was the thinking?
Well, one of the, trust me, we had a lot of conversations about this. We did want to keep the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday the same for a variety of reasons. One of them is infinite campus, but more than anything, to maintain some semblance of what the whole year has been, especially for our ninth graders who have never known anything but Monday, Thursday is day one, Tuesday, Friday is day two. So, that maintains some level of consistency with that piece of it. So, we were really looking at just, you know, we started Wednesdays one way, we moved to Wednesdays a different way. Hopefully, this is, you know, what we're going to do for the last ten weeks or so of school, but we did talk about it. The alternating day schedule provides some challenges for some of our teachers too, who work with the world outside of the school. So, at this point in time, it didn't make a lot of sense, and there would be a lot of issues with infinite campus if we switched the way we were doing the scheduling at this point.
Yeah, it can get better.
So, thank, that's helpful. I guess my thought, I just want to make sure that Wednesday is a meaningful day, because I think a lot of the feedback we got over, you know, the past however many months, has been Wednesday is kind of mixed. Some people liked it, but I would say more people I talked to thought it, not much happened. They didn't get, really only go to school four days a week, I think, was some of the criticism I heard. So, I just want to make sure that Wednesday and that the expectation for the teachers is that thirty minutes, thirty minutes is enough to teach something and go over and review and stuff, that it really is a meaningful eight-blocks. I like what, the way you've described it makes a lot of sense. I just want to make sure that Wednesday doesn't become a day where it's just like, oh, you come in, you say hi, and then, oh, there's only twenty minutes left, we don't have time, next class, same thing, so.
Yeah, and we've talked about that a lot, and I think that each of the departments is coming up with some pretty interesting and creative things that they can do with Wednesdays that will both supplement what they're doing, but also help with some of the curriculum challenges that they were having before. I mean, the teachers are, they're going to utilize the time because they need the time. So, I think that, I think it'll be a nice transition back for the kids. I also think that that advisory piece of it and just that introduction back in a half-hour segments on Wednesday is going to probably be the best transition for everybody going back. This is, Wednesday's new for everyone this year, so this will be a little bit different. I'm excited about the idea of doing advisory during lunch and kind of making the middle-of-the-day advisory activities, lunch, and our advisors are double-dop, so it also gives you two teachers during that time to work with kids. So, I mean, we'll see what, I'm sure that we will be working with it every Wednesday to tinker with it a little bit, but I know that the teachers really want the time, so I'm not really worried that they're going to use it wisely. And a lot of the kids that are coming back haven't been in the building. It's just kind of interesting. So, it also gives us, like I said, three points of contact in one week, so the kids will have more time to get to know the other kids in the class that they maybe haven't had an opportunity to meet yet, as well as the teacher.
Thanks, Deb. Really appreciate it.
I think Jamie had her hand in. Oh, good.
Mine's not for Deb, so if you want to go.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions about the Wednesday thing as well, and I see the points that you made for the positive aspects of keeping the Monday, Tuesday the same, the Thursday, Friday the same. I like the idea of all classes being able to touch base three times a week. That's a positive. I do have a couple of concerns about the Wednesday. Our school switched to a rotating block, and now we're in block right now, because whenever we tried to put eight classes into one day, we felt like the majority of the time you were in the hallway, and there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of lost time with that, with the, with this fact that we still have a few cases, having everybody mixing on, you know, eight times a day a little, is a bit of a negative. But my concern, the primary thing was, you know, making sure that it was meaningful and making sure that, it sounds like the departments are working out productive ways to use that time, and I think there are. I think you definitely could get a lot done, even if it's, you know, five minutes of taking attendance and twenty-five minutes of, you could, you know, review a few problems, you could set up a lot of stuff. But the other concern, and this is, this is coming from home, is that what happens if everyone decides to give us a quiz on Wednesday? We're going to get slammed with seven tests on one day, so, and I could see that as potentially being... So, I think my own experience, when we had an eight-period day, it tended to be a little bit like you felt like you were on that treadmill at number ten the whole day from the teacher's standpoint. You're like, I got to go, got to go, got to go. I have to have, you know, a lot of lesson plans done for today, and from a student's standpoint, you're running around, you know. So, I think that without some good planning, and I don't know if you've got PD coming up or whatever, but I think it could be a very, instead of being what it is now, which is kind of a low-stress day, it could be a high-stress day for kids and teachers if it's not done carefully. So, I do have a little bit of concern about that.
And the CILs, we've been talking about this for the last couple of Mondays, and we are communicating or trying to communicate. The quiz and test and homework piece came up as far as, you know, being more aware and communicating better between departments and what we're doing so that the kids don't end up with a lot of assignments or a lot of quizzes all on the same day. We're pretty aware that, you know, that that's a whole new thing for us. And I did actually shorten the passing time, hopefully, hoping to get more instructional time out of it. I literally walked the building to see how long it would take me to get from the music wing up to the planetarium, but, so we are, those are all things that we've been talking about too. So, I mean, they're on our radar, and we're working to try to make sure that we're looking out for the best interest of the kids with all of that.
The good news is we're only talking like eight days though, right? By the time we get...
Yeah, it's not very long at all.
It's not the end of the world.
You want to make it.
The point though.
Yeah, this is a good point. We do want to be meaningful.
So, I do just have one suggestion for you, Deb. My daughter has had me go find the maps that went out at freshman orientation, because there are a bunch of her friends who are not in school now. So, I've been printing out dozens of maps of the high school for her friends, so they can find their way when they come back, because they haven't been in school yet. So, maybe if we resend out that freshman orientation map pack or something.
Good suggestion. Yep, that's a great idea.
Read okay that email.
That's a good...
But my question, is it for Deb? It's for the elementary school and for the middle school? What does their Wednesday look like?
Yeah, Jason, we can turn to him. He can just kind of give a synopsis of what the day one, day two, and so before.
I was just going to ask if any board member on the Zoom call have any questions for Deb or anything concerning the high school? Nope?
I have, just, and just about the late buses. Are we going to actually start the late buses again or no?
You know, Kim, I haven't had any conversations yet about the late bus or starting anything up for after-school. Has Teresa?
I'm just going to put...
Not yet?
We haven't talked about that in terms of, you know, you know, from a usage point of view, the middle school clubs are all virtual, so they don't have students staying after-school. Obviously, high school has had sports, you know, and some limited activities, but that isn't something that we've, you know, gone down the road of exploring just yet.
Do we mind actually going down the road, exploring it?
Yeah, we do.
Because I just think it might be, you know, something that we can add, and it shouldn't be an issue, and it will be helpful because we do have our kids, there's going to be a tremendous amount of kids, and our money should be saved.
Yeah, yeah, let's look at some numbers and sporting activities and, you know, availability of bus. I think we used about three or four in the past, but definitely, we'll touch it.
Three, yeah. There are three late buses, and so then, you know, obviously, we would just talk about having the buildings emptied out by a certain time in order for cleaning and, you know, those kinds of things. But, yeah, we can talk about that.
Yeah, okay. Barry, did you have your hand up?
You're muted.
Two questions. One on the return to school. There is a group of students at the middle school that are in a geometry program that kind of shares a teacher at the high school, and they've been told, want to understand from parents, that they will go all virtual and will not have an option to go back in person, and the way the geometry class is taught, it would be much more appropriate for them to be back in person because of the interactive nature of the subject of geometry. And right now, doing on the Zoom thing, it's pretty much done as a straight lecture deal. So, I think that you take a look into how can we get those kids that are in the middle school geometry class that want to go in-person into an in-person setup for that class so they don't have to take it all virtual, which hasn't been working for them.
Okay, we can look into it.
Okay. And second question, I don't know if you want to deal with this yet, but there is another item there in the COVID expenses that I have one quick question on. I don't know if you want to deal with those now or take those later.
We're going to just hear from Jason at the middle school, then we can have elementary questions for Jamie Allen, and then we'll go, I'll run through the sheet quick.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Perfect. Thanks. Yeah. Oh, good. Qualification. So, it sounds like there's a number of students who haven't been coming to the high school. Were they virtual Viking and they've switched?
Exactly, yeah. Some of them are virtual, they're coming for the first time.
Do we have the members on the switch, or is that later we'll talk about, when the people switched, since we're going back full-time, switched virtual to full-time versus, and then how many who worked, you know, and switched out?
Well, we should, plus the survey. We should have their survey results too.
It's in there.
Yeah, so I can, am I doing this now? Oh, am I going here now?
Let's get Jason's in there, Tom. Let you look at all of it.
Can I update?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll pull it up during the update. Hey, Jason.
Great. So, just to say, we're really excited about our kids coming back, and it's going to be great. We're working hard on, you know, the return and all the protocols. Barry, in terms of your question, I did have a couple of inquiries about that. We're currently just trying to follow the CDC guidelines about keeping our cohorts together, but I do have it on the agenda for the central office meeting tomorrow, the secondary meeting to go through what that could potentially look like and just see where we want to be with that if we blend kids with it, because then we would be mixing cohorts if we do that, which was not part of the guidelines from the CDC. But it's on the agenda for tomorrow to talk about. In terms of our schedule, our Wednesday schedule, we wanted to keep it extremely simple for kids. You know, our guys are younger, and we wanted particularly our fifth and sixth graders to be able to come in and not have to manage a new schedule that they were, you know, already maybe not accustomed to. So, we're simply going to do the first Wednesday is going to be a day one, the following Wednesday is going to be a day two, the next Wednesday is going to be a day one. So, instructionally, it'll look like every other day, and that, we've talked at length with our reopening committee and with our team leaders, and that's the model that we settled on, but I think that that will bring a lot of consistency for kids when they come back, and we do have some virtual kids that are actually coming back full-time as well. So, I think that's going to be a nice, stable, smooth schedule for everyone. So, we wanted to keep it as simple as possible, and so in a nutshell, really, that's what it'll look like. We also looked at the number of day ones versus the number of day twos to make sure that that was all balanced for the remainder of the year, but as Bill said, I think there's only eight Wednesdays that we need to account for. So, hopefully, that'll get us through the next trimester, and then we'll, already in the planning phases for the fall.
Great. Thanks, Jason. Good. All right. Jamie, want to ask your question? Then we'll look at that.
My secondary question was what's going to happen at the elementary schools? And then I have other questions about someone the same thing, whether they're making one Blue Elementary or my Blue Elementary.
Basically, I mean, we have elementary principals here, but basically, they're going back to their normal five-day...
I know Zoom at the elementary has been great. The other ones on Wednesdays haven't been hit or miss, but...
Yep, they're staying in their cohorts. They've been eating in the cafeterias, they're running, they're going to music, they're going to...
I've been full-time, and she is loving every second of being back at school every day. And then there's been some traffic issues.
Yeah, and then my ex-enters rep, actually, I think Mr. Wilson was over there, working Mr. Pervos today on some of that this afternoon.
There've been some traffic problems. The other question is, are we talking about putting the for and after-school back together? Because I've heard a lot of parents asking for that.
We're in the talking stages of it. It just came up today, actually. We were talking a little bit about this morning.
Talking stage through the fall or for this year?
Well, more for the fall, but we did hear that it came up for this year, but we were leaning more towards after our conversation this morning of looking, definitely starting it back up for the fall.
Okay, because I've heard a lot of...
Oh, yeah, yeah. We will not be running it again.
We drafted a parent letter. Andrea Scott and I wanted to send out tomorrow morning, actually, because we finished the draft today, because some parents have been contacting her in regards to next year, more so seems to be the buzz. So, we just wanted a sort of, you know, we're not going to conduct the program for the remainder of this year, however, July one will be registration for next year. Please be on the lookout and sort of something that will go to all elementary parents.
Okay.
So, that, including our pre-kick, does any transition could have been before that?
And then I've heard a lot of chatter about the week of three-twenty-nine, Monday and Tuesday are full days, Wednesday, Thursday are half-days, and there's no school on Friday.
Yep.
And that's a first week back for...
Third and fourth.
Third and fourth.
Third, fourth, seven, eight.
So, there's a lot of chatter about them going back full-time but really not going back full-time that first week.
Yep.
It's tricky, and I tried, we tried to fit it in.
Something that came up, and I know a lot of parents are talking about it, because it's really not a full week back, and...
Yeah.
So, it's just something that's out there.
Yep. Now, we heard a little bit of that too. Thank you, Jamie. So, the, the other thing I just wanted to share that was in the, in board docs was just an update on the projected expenditures. We didn't have an FFO meeting, but we wanted to make sure the full board kind of saw us because there are some increased costs that Mariana and I, who've gone through, and, you know, Chris Lund, obviously, has been part of this in ordering. So, the PPE and the other supplies, you can see are the two main drivers. The PPE is our extra plexiglass, and you can see it out here. You know, we have in the south gym, you know, eighty more tables, which is on this list. We've got to add to the south gym with additional plexiglass, classrooms with plexiglass, so that's one of the biggest expenses between here and the middle school. And then we can see, so that's the PPE cost. The total estimated other supplies, you can see there, you know, we're looking at eight outdoor picnic tables to add, you know, to that area out there, which would be nice to have, you know, we've got, it gets a little warmer out. So, the other big one is the, we went back and forth, the purchase or rental of tables for the south gym, because we don't have any, so eight-foot tables. We have the chairs, because we can move the chairs down, because people, you know, kids are socially distanced, but the rental cost was, we looked at, we had two estimates, so two rental costs, one was fifteen thousand dollars, and the other one was... two rental costs, one was $15,000, and the other one was like a hundred or.
A hundred less.
Hundred less than the cost to buy them. Well, we could turn around, run and maybe sell them, or sell some of the tables if we don't want them in the future, so. So it just made sense to buy them, and he goes with food and making a mess, and, you know, you might be paying fees for, yeah, damage, so it just made sense to buy them. So that was the other big cost, and the air purifiers, you heard Grace talk about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, you know, the whole A-ring, and for the most part, you know, the rooms are, they're smaller, the desks are raised, so we felt the need to put an air purifier in every room.
I think that that was very smart for us, I think, too.
Yeah.
It really did.
It seemed to make people feel better about, you know, having nothing there, some already have them, so that helped too.
And those weren't needed in any of our other schools, just due to the fact that the high school's obviously older and hasn't been recently renovated by elementary schools, or we're expecting air purifiers for other.
There are some in other, in other, not in every classroom.
Really, it's density at the high school, the rooms are smaller for the number of students in there.
Bigger bodies and more, yeah, more potential for transmission sort of thing, so.
That's the reason.
That was the reason, so. So those are the two big items on this, which kind of drives the, you know, the 99,000 increase. You know, we're still looking at the SR2 funds, you know, that's 761,000, which would offset some of these costs. They're just starting the application process, that just opened Friday, right, Marana? So we'll start the application process, and we can draw down, and start drawing down on some of those funds as we work through the rest of the year.
Okay.
So, just to give you a snapshot of where.
Barry, did you have a, did you have a question then on COVID expenses?
Mute. Yes, yes, okay, just, it's a very quick question on the total technology, does that include the license for Zoom?
Um, anyone?
It does.
Yeah.
It does.
Yes.
We just consolidated it, nothing changed in the interior, we consolidated, just it was on one sheet.
Yeah.
But.
But the cost I think is, it's $8,000, I think, right?
No, no, he's talking about.
The cost for Zoom, though, just to be.
For next year.
Next year.
Which is not Zoom, I only have allocated $8,000 in next year's budget for an online conference-based platform. We don't have it labeled, we don't know what.
Zoom is something else.
We're doing it as a placeholder, whereas this year's expenses obviously are more in the 20, over $20,000 range, because it's something that we purchased. But I only have $8,000 in next year's budget, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Good, great, thanks.
Oh, Kate, yep, good, thank you.
I'm just wondering if Jeff, you've already made those purchases, because I'm just thinking the VFW and the American Legion have pretty much had their doors shuttered, and they've got a lot of long tables that they're not really using, that I'm sure they would lend to us, but if you are, if it's already a done deal, then it's a mute point, just.
Yeah, we talked about that, Kate, about borrowing from church or churches or VFWs, the problem is damage, we were concerned that, you know, we're gonna have these for, you know, 10 weeks, and they're being used for lunch every day by high school students, we just, we were concerned. So, and usually, the ones you get from locations like that are the wooden tables, which you'd have to cover, I think, with a tablecloth or something too, so we thought, these are the plastic white ones like these that you wipe right down or run the mop across for cleaning, but we did think about, but thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Perfect.
Jeff, that's, I think that's it.
Eric, go ahead.
One comment, one question. So one comment on the expenses, although it's showing it's going up, but over time, it's come down a lot, and then now we're having a little tick up because of the change. I think that's just important for, so it might be something to note on the schedule, kind of where we started.
Right.
Just to show where we're ending up, because otherwise, it looks like, oh, we're spending more, but, you know, we've done a ton to get costs down.
Yeah.
My question is around extracurriculars, so what can we do to do more? Well, I should ask what are we doing, I guess, instead of assuming that we are doing as much as we can, so that's not clear, but I already started that way. So is there more we can do for extracurriculars? And now, you know, kick it back to school, and you got five days a week, which is great, can we extend, and I know late buses play into that and other things, but I think we need to do everything we can, even if it's not, it doesn't have to be, you know, CLAC sports, it doesn't have to be a competitive, just what can we do to get our students together face-to-face more time, whether it's clubs after school, I don't know what it is, I don't have the answers, but if there's more we can do, both at high school, middle school, I don't know, elementary, I'm not really sure as much, but now high school, middle school, I think that really helps the kind of mental health piece of things as well as not only being in school will help, but even just like some sense of normalcy again, even if you're wearing masks, but you're sitting in a room together, I think that would be helpful, social, so not even the answer necessarily, but if we can look into what we can do.
Yeah, I think once we, you know, we start to get closer to getting kids back, I think those are the conversations that will continue. I just, I wanna focus on the fact that the worst thing that could happen is we end up going to a moat with kids for a two-minute period if something, you know, transmissions start to fly out. I really hope that doesn't happen, but we're just trying to cautiously approach this and get kids back safe, but that's gotta be being thought about as well.
Yeah, and I'm kind of coinciding with nicer weather.
Yeah, outdoors, exactly.
If we can do it not in a room, but outside, we have a new picture, whatever it is.
Yeah, definitely.
I think that would be helpful, yeah, if it rains, then you don't have it, that's fine.
Yeah.
I'd be okay, but when we can, it would be great to be outside with friends doing something.
Absolutely. Yeah, thanks, Eric.
Any other comments, comments, Jeff, Ben, everything?
That's, no, that's, that's it, we'll keep it close, I'm not gonna.
I was just gonna, again, just, once again, thank the administrative team and the principals for making all this happen. I think we've got a whole bunch of happy parents.
And kids.
And kids, yeah, and kids. And I think, and I think that, and I think actually, it helps with reducing the stress, I hope, for the teaching staff as well, because it's a little more back to somewhat of a normal pattern, I like, but.
Well, I think that vaccine part too was a relief or unstressed reliever for our staff or to any teachers, to be honest with you.
Great, so, yeah, so, I mean, really, thanks.
I have another comment.
So much, so.
I'll just follow up on Eric's point there. I think that maybe even looking into next year, the extracurricular stuff, particularly for, you know, the kids who are current sophomores through seniors, they had a chance to have the, find out what the club meeting was before COVID hit, but the current freshmen, you know, to commit to joining a club and under these conditions is probably, you know, it takes a different kind of kid to do that, so whether it happens this spring, or maybe a larger effort happens next fall, when hopefully things are a little better, that both the incoming freshmen, but maybe the sophomores get more encouragement to get involved that maybe they didn't because of what happened this year. You know, it's, so also, it's one thing, but I just think there's only so much some kids are gonna jump into at this point as a freshman, so just realize that clubs at the start of next year might be a bigger effort to put on.
Yeah, we want to be back, I don't know, I'm envisioning the start of next year, everything's back to normal, and the only thing that might be different is we're still allowing a virtual component. That's kind of how I was envisioning next year, summer programs too, we've already talked to Dave Putnam, we got the green light to get going, we're starting to set up summer programs, as long as things continue to progress the way they have, there's no reason why we shouldn't be running, you know, all those programs in a safe, you know, manner with masks and social distancing, but that's, that's it.
I think that, like what Bill is speaking to, and I've heard a little bit of this, I haven't seen it in our house, but I am, I do recognize it. So it does depend on the student and their level of independence, their level of self-confidence, right? We're talking about ninth graders, we're talking about kids that are going to really, that's a big transitional year, from fifth and then the eighth to ninth. And I have heard some of those, you know, concerns from parents where their student, their child is having a real hard time, because let's face it, one of the biggest challenges has been connection, right? And that student or that child is really left up to themselves, and dependent upon whether or not they have the capacity to do that work out, they don't really have to structure with maybe a friend or a peer, because they don't have that. So instead of reaching out to try something new, because there has been a tremendous amount going on at the high school, I think the availability is there, but it's very difficult for specifically that age group to put themselves out there in that way. So I really am listening to that, and I think that there's something there with that. So even though we're going back full-blown, or back, this is what we're doing, there's gonna be a full, like, a whole, like, the age group of students that really don't know what that looks like. So they don't really understand.
I think you said that well, Ken, it's, what you said that I didn't get out, right, is that the key is, some kids can join a club by themselves, but most kids don't do it that way. Most kids, you know, they go hand-in-hand, walk in and say, we're gonna jump into this together, and they didn't have that friend to go hand-in-hand into a lot of this stuff with, so I think that's a difference, you know, there are, it's certainly a much smaller percentage of kids that will walk through that door boldly by themselves and join a club. Most cases, it's with a buddy.
And I would, I would say from a cohorting perspective, our counselors here are really honing in on ninth grade and 10th grade right now, bringing those kids into Viking four. They're meeting that criteria because of some of that social-emotional piece tied into their academic performance, and then the counselors are really bringing them in now.
Yep.
And I'm watching that group number.
Yeah.
Go higher than my 11th and 12th graders right now.
Right.
And I think it's connected to what you just said.
Good. Okay, excellent, excellent. Okay, ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to our next item, which is the capital improvement plan for the budget of items for '21, '22. Jeff?
Yeah, so Mr. Lund has graciously joined us on-site this evening, did a great job, you know, putting this together. The one thing we hadn't really had the opportunity was to kind of dive through, you know, next year's items specifically. So we wanted to, we put the information, you know, in just that, you know, the section of what we're looking at for next year, and wanted to kind of turn it over to Chris to share, you know, additional specific information about the items, and any questions that anybody had too. We're hoping that we don't see reductions in, from the town and CIP, but we don't know what's gonna happen there, we're still on hold with that. So we've not met with the town yet either on CIP, so that's something I think we should try and do soon and later as well. So, there we go, we can kind of share it. Chris, you, maybe you want to highlight, I mean, you don't have to go through every one of these, but, you know, focus it out just to see them, but in specific, or if any of the board members too had any questions about them, or anybody, our board members at home, so, or to zoom it in.
So what I, what I prepped for tonight is a bunch of slides that are just pictures of things, and I can go through those very quickly, just to give you a sense of things that I was looking at, as well as what's on the list itself, so if somebody asks you, well, what's this, you have at least a little bit of an idea, as well as to highlight some other problems that have come up since I put this together. But of course, you know, first image up here is the basic plan for next year, and we've talked about this, that we are putting most of our efforts in, or all of our efforts in, basically, next year into the middle school and high school, because we spent so much time and money on the elementary school, so we have to catch up here. What I would point out here is if we do get to the point where we have to make some reductions, I prioritize everything on this list, and I would just basically start at number 12 and work backwards if we have to start losing things.
Wow, very good.
So, the high school, start. So on the project list, you recall, is a program or a project for pavement, asphalt, sidewalks, and drainage, and just to highlight a couple of reasons that we need that, here we have a catch basin that's making its way into the ground a little further than it should be, and you can see that it's been chipped up by the plows, we have some cracking in the asphalt itself, so we did check, we did clean all these out, and fortunately, they're in pretty good shape otherwise, but the surface is a problem. To the right of the screen here, this is one of these areas that Chris Olson stops by at least once a week and says, can we do something about the corner where you turn into the junior lot? Because it's mud, and everybody cuts the corner and tracks it in, so as you can see, we don't have a complete sidewalk behind there, so he's right in that manner, as well as the asphalt there, that is the walking surface, has degraded quite a bit. So that project is just gonna be really cutting and pasting and patching and filling areas that really need to be done throughout the whole campus here. Just a couple examples, some alligator cracking here, which means that the subbase material underneath was either not compacted right, or the wrong material, or the cover asphalt was too thin, so from wear and tear, it's just sinking in there. Basic cracks here, which we'd like to fill, because as we are now out of the winter season, where hopefully we're done with freeze thaw, as soon as you have a crack in there, the water gets in there, expands, and breaks your sidewalks and your asphalt up, so time to do some maintenance on that as well. Now getting into sidewalks proper, the right-hand picture is pretty obvious that we have a significant trip hazard there, the concrete's broken up, that's the walking surface as you would lead into the athletic wing on that side of the building, so we have a lot of traffic there. Liability, don't want anybody in, being injured, as well as, you can't see as well here, but the pavers that were put in, the brick pavers are a couple inches, in some case, lower than the walking surface around it, so another trip hazard. I'd like to get out there and grind down those edges, so at least it's a smooth surface. And this is the exit on the rear side of the athletic wing, so if you go in this side, if you had to go out the backside, in case of emergency egress or whatnot, that whole walking surface would be, you know, a hazard for anybody, particularly if you were, we need to make it ADA compliant, and that would not be easier to get through if you're in a wheelchair or otherwise, had issues walking. Couple other items, this is right out front, the archway, we have something going on here that I need to investigate from the masonry perspective. You can see that the bottom, of course, a brick here is tilted and ruptured, not quite sure why that moved, but we also have movement, and this is the same column at the top, where you would have an expansion joint, but it should not be that wide, and you have an expansion joint here, which means something's moving there as well, something that needs to be investigated, and as we bring on our consultant engineers and architects, that would be one of those places where I'd be looking, have them look at from a water intrusion perspective. Old doors, the A-wing, as you walk around the back, we have old doors, and just a couple examples, what I would point out here is the thresholds are elevated, they're a trip hazard now, we should have them at least flush to the ground. No exterior handles, you know, whether that's for security, or they just got ripped off or a dime. Closed windows, which actually is an egress concern, because you don't want to throw the door open, knock somebody over. These are old posts to prevent the doors from flying open all the way, and they've been beaten up over the years. And on the left-hand picture here, I'll point out these hinges, these piano hinges, those are not the original hinges, so had a lot, I would say about half the doors, maybe more, have replacement hinges on them, just from years of wear and tear and being open, so certainly it's time to take stock of our doors and look at replacing them with something that's a little safer from egress perspective, and as well as secure. My biggest concern is water, and a couple pictures of water intrusion, so this is, you can see the staining here, obviously a big hole here, something's going on on the roofs, roofs are in our project list, as well as, you know, this is a door just over here, where you can see that the paint has failed, you can't see the cracks so much, but this whole section here is sagging, has split, so we have to look at why the water is getting in there. The old windows, again, A-wing windows, and single pane with the transom, and then these brown panels are just. And then these brown panels are just decorative. Uh, you can't see it so well, or maybe you might be able to see, but these panels have delaminated in a lot of places and they've been stuck back on. Uh, this one's right over here, and if you look closely, you can see that, you know, there's a lot of caulk or adhesive. Um, it's peeling away at the corner here. So those systems are inefficient, it's time to replace them. They leak, um, you know, both cold air in the winter, warm air and humidity during the summer months, and that's why we're looking there. Uh, these are the single pane windows in the gym, which actually they're in really good shape, but wholly energy inefficient. Paints of single glass, uh, certainly something to look at from an efficiency perspective. And the good thing about windows in general is that we can get a pretty good reimbursement rate typically from the state. And so again, we could leverage that to our advantage. Uh, water intrusion issues here, this is the EFS, uh, actually, again, right over by the entrance to the gymnasium, the athletic wing. And water intrusion is an issue here, uh, cracking, uh, water's come out through the bottom. Uh, it's really prevalent in that area in particular, in those tray enclosures there. So, uh, it may be lingering previously from roofing issue and the water, uh, just the moisture never got out of the system. Uh, but we do need to take a look at that. I've had some architects that I've worked with that hate EFS, some that swear by it. Um, it all depends on how well it was done originally and how well it's maintained and how well you're, you're doing at keeping water out of it. You know, which typically means your roof and your flashing. So be looking at that. A couple more pictures here, you can see the cracks and the staining around there. Uh, this is my favorite door in the whole building. I like the checkerboard pattern. Uh, and four or five different, you know, types of materials here and whatnot, so just throw that on there. Uh, that's the, uh, backside of the, uh, by the tennis courts. And this is, of course, a pro, an area that's.
This is, this is my nemesis, yeah, this guy's me crazy every time I walk by it.
Jeff loves this, uh, so we want to repaint this, we, uh, the whole way around. So I put money into the budget as a request for two faces. This is the south face and the east face, the faces everybody sees the most. Um, and then, uh, next year we could do the other sides. And of course, this is, um, from what I understand is it was originally installed and then it was, you know, that payment system failed over time. And then some folks got up there and scraped it and painted over it with the, you know, whatever they had on hand, uh, with all good intentions. Um, but it really needs to be taken down to, uh, their metal and recode it to make it last. Okay, this is the interior of the pool. This is looking up at the ceiling. This is a newer prop, well, not a newer problem, but it's gotten, um, significantly more attention recently as these chunks of rust, uh, continue to fall into the pool. And it's not in the budget this year, but I plan on getting some painters out here to take a look, to give us an opinion on what we can do to arrest this. The insulation, of course, and the demidification system have improved things significantly. Um, but all the coatings were probably damaged well before that. Uh, so you're gonna have, continue to have rust. Um, you're right up against the ceiling, so you're gonna trap moisture, um, at that barrier. You're gonna have condensation once really cold. Um, so that's what we have as a result. Yeah, do need to look at that.
Yeah, it's.
Pictures are very powerful. Wow.
Mm-hmm, there's some issues.
Just a couple shots. Yeah, uh, over at the middle school, um, just some water intrusion here that we're gonna be looking at. With this year's money, but, uh, maybe having to do some of the work with next year's money. Uh, again, that's water intrusion here. You can see that the effluence is coming out of the brick. You can see it over here underneath the window. And this is the backside of the archway where, um, this is a mold, uh, the darker color probably just because it doesn't get any sun out there. But as well as the effluence, you have water intrusion there as well. Um, fortunately the cap locks on here were in pretty good shape, unlike the archways, which we replaced with the, uh, the flashing, the brick metal. Um, so not quite sure why they would have varied, but I feel though that they are in better shape here. And then, and this, just quickly.
We started up here, Rob, uh, had, uh, I mean, just got up on a lift and with a camera to really kind of get some. We've had some chunks, you know, that are size of, you know, half dollars that have fallen and.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Hit a pool patron while she was swimming, you know, a, a week ago, so. Yeah, yeah, but that's, yeah, that's gone like that for, it's been kind of flaking long time. Yeah.
So just really quickly, we had money in the, uh, budget requested for some roof work. Um, so if you haven't seen our roof before, this is it. Um, the vast majority of it, of course, covered in solar panels. Um, the black section to the south or to the bottom of your page, that's the EPDM, the rubber roofing. Um, and then the rest of the system is built up roofing. So we've talked about that, just wanted to give you a sense where you plan to do, uh, that EPDM roofing. Uh, we'd like to coat that as well as, uh, the sections over by the auditorium. Um, and then some other repairs. The reason we need to do that is we did some repairs last year and just a couple of pictures from that final report. So what we're gonna do is put a coating on top of that, sort of like a port rubber roof membrane. And that's the white material there. So it seals up, puts a seal over the existing roof. Um, it's significantly less costly than replacing the whole roof and gives us, um, 10 to 20 more years of roofing, depending on how it lasts. So you can imagine that the, uh, cost effectiveness and efficiency of that project is actually quite good. Uh, one of the downsides of the work we have to do at the high school will be working with the solar array up there. So in the areas that we plan to cope, we're going to have to work with the solar provider to have the array typically dismantled and moved off the program. So, um, but all in all, when it's done, it'll be much better.
Can you go back one?
Sure.
Um, what are we looking at there underneath the panels? But a little bit lower, right here?
Yeah, okay, so we have a ballasted solar array system. So you have the panels sitting on the framework and then they are weighted down with these concrete bricks. So what you're looking at are the concrete bricks. One of the issues with that particular system.
So that's versus poking holes in the roof?
Yeah, that's why they did it.
Okay, okay.
So.
Uh, that's kind of, okay.
Then it's effective, unfortunately, they've had a lot of problems with the concrete bricks. So they replace a couple fifty, a hundred every year. Um, and that's because they start to look like that. Uh, they break down to sand and blows away. So just to, you know, and the other benefit of the coating that we put on is gonna be white and much more, uh, friendly with heat. You know, we don't absorb the heat, so we don't have to eat the building as well as, um, reflective heat into the environment. Which, if we're in a big city, of course, that'd be a larger concern, but, um, certainly it's better overall. Middle school, uh, very quickly, this is, I'll finish up with this. Uh, I wanna share this, this is a, some work we had done. We had the middle school roof scanned with infrared. And this is the overall roof, everywhere you see a spot there corresponds with an area that was leaking. And what that looks like on the infrared, uh, on the left side of the screen, these are thermograms. So blue is cold, red is hot, and green is in the middle. And what that indicates, uh, if you do this at night or at dusk, the wet areas retain the heat. So you can go up there, shoot that picture, and anywhere there is moisture, uh, it shows up as a hotspot. So you can very quickly determine where there's a hole. So there's the hot spots, the areas next to it that we, uh, had repaired ultimately, so. But again, that roof's 20 years old, it's held, held up pretty well. Um, but with some additional maintenance on it, we hope to get another 10, 20 years out of it before we have to do any type of replacement work. And significantly, again, less expensive. That's all I had for the CIP. Yeah, that's pretty good.
So that, that's kind of cool. So you shoot a picture of the roof in the water that remained that held the heat, and that's where you found out, that's how you find the roof?
Right, it's, it's, so there's like a little hole in the membrane and the water gets underneath there and right where that hotspot is, yeah.
Have we done that with the high school roof as well?
Yes. Good, wow, very good. Although we could only do the auditorium because we have the solar array on everything else.
Gotcha.
What does it cost to get those images? Is that like a drone image or something or?
Um, a lot of times you just, you go up on the roof and shoot it from a high spot on the roof or just, you know, take a step ladder up. Um, I don't know if anybody, this technology's been around for a while, probably with drones, yeah. You know, for a camera on a drone, that'd be a great way to do it, but, you know. For this, this vendor, they just had a, like a 10 foot step ladder and stood up there.
Yeah.
Pressure's in.
Cool.
Hey, just put some things to your attention. Any, any, uh, any questions from our folks on Zoom first? Uh, Barry and then Kate.
Question, on the first page of the budget, there's a reference to, uh, technology acquisition plan. It says, see technology acquisition plan. I looked through this, I couldn't find it. I don't know if, um, I was missing something or, uh, or I could, uh, or I could see that.
Mary, explain the technol, the acquisition plan works.
Sure. Barry, the, um, technology acquisition plan is, um, it's basically a purchase through, a lease through the town where the finance director there finances, um, the funds for, um, a particular amount. Like last year, she financed the funds for one point, uh, one point plus million dollars for the purchase of the laptop. So next year we put in, um, I think it's $500,000?
Bring it up, bring it up.
Um, sorry, $500,000, um, which she will finance over a five year period. And then specifically, if you're looking for specifically what's going to purch, um, what that's going for, I think, Amy, you can.
Yeah, we typically develop that, so our tech group right now is working on a five year rollout with those dollars and what it would fund over the course of the next five years. Our targeted goal is to get that done by the end of March, because we, we have to reprioritize some things based on the pandemic, uh, that we had sort of hoped to roll out. Um, and so I would most likely be bringing that to you as a board by the end of this month, um, so that you could also have that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Kate?
Uh, Chris, I wanted to say thank you and I really appreciate the visuals, that was really helpful. And I felt like I just got a nice little tour of all the facilities. Um, my question for you though would be as far as the sidewalk repair and all that, is there a way of minimizing how much concrete and cement we put down? If we could use other sources? I know that you're environmentally and ecologically minded, but just wondering, um, the best way to do that?
Of course, we're certainly not going to expand the footprint. Um, I would like to reduce it on the areas around the perimeter, but a lot of what I'm gonna be working on are, are really the walking surfaces that get a lot of use. So there's not, I, I think in those areas, probably not a lot that we can do. Um, the problem I see sometimes with using pervious pavers, um, and there's an example in there where the pavers were put down. Unfortunately, they subside before the concrete does, so you're left with that, that trip hazard. So I hope not to do actually a lot of replacement, um, but a lot of patching and grinding to get smoother surfaces, but there will be some areas. Uh, next year, what I hope to do is, and we've been working with, you know, the regional stormwater coalition to try to get grants to do more dry wells and whatnot. So, uh, we, they didn't have enough money to help us out this year. But we have a couple of requests in, uh, to put dry wells over in the senior parking lot. Uh, hence the reason that wasn't on this list this year, because we're waiting to see, maybe we get some funding for that. But, uh, we will not be expanding our, uh, per, impervious, uh, surfaces, but I don't know if we'll be able to reduce that much.
Thank you, appreciate that. And then following up on that, as far as the windows and all that, you'll be looking for, um, environmentally friendly windows too that will reduce the heat and contain the cold, that kind of thing?
Yeah, we definitely want to improve the energy efficiency all around. And of course, that's linked with whatever the state would reimburse us for anyway, so we'll be definitely doing that.
Great, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Good.
Hi, how is it? Jamie and Eric?
Okay.
I'm just gonna reiterate what I said during the budget cycle, that I'm blown away by your capital improvement plan. All the detail you put into it. I mean, the day one through five, like, uh, section where you filled out a menu for everything, and your order, why we need it and everything. I, I'm just blown away by the work that you and Tim put into this. This is the best capital improvement project I've seen in 14 years on the board, so thank you. I, I really appreciate all the detail and hard work that you do to all of this. My problem isn't with you, it's with me and Tim and all the passports for the last 14 years that we've cut this line item every single year and that that has led to this. That every year, whether it's a contentious budget or we need to cut something, we always cut this.
Oh, I see, oh, yeah.
And this has led to what it is now. And, and I'm trying to discuss that with all of us, but I'm hoping that we can fix it.
Yeah, I think, uh, Jamie, that, yeah, I think that that's right. I think we have, over the past, we've, we've taken care of some big items, some bad, some really bad things. Um, but it's this, it's, it's, what Chris has done is he's identified these, these pieces that are, that are starting to happen or in the process. And if you let it go too far, it turns into a huge mess. And so, and I, and so at one.
That a lot of these things are in that capital improvement plan that we had done 13 years ago. That big giant to do binder from 13 years ago. I'm gonna bet you that some of these are in that.
Yeah. Uh, yeah.
Can be kept back forever.
Yep, yep, no, I, I agree. But I think the important thing is, is to, is to identify the ones, the things, things, and to kind of get at things that are growing problems. I think that's what, that's what's fantastic, Chris, I mean, it really is. So, Eric?
Jamie said most of it, I'll say, I'll reiterate, this is phenomenal. Um, it's, it's great to see, it's so clear. Um, and, and, um, related everything, but all, all prepared on is, I think it also makes it very clear to the town, the board of staff and the board of council and the town on how important they need to fix it. Like, not only is it just a line item, you kind of, we just lived this, um, in case, like, you know, like that whole tour. And so that makes, with getting funding for it, much easier, I think, because it's very clear. We're just saying, fix cracks in sidewalk. They're like, well, well, what if we push that off to next year? Right, it doesn't sound like, you know, you get a picture and you say, oh yeah, someone's gonna fall on that, uh, at some point and we better fix that thing. So thank you, that was, it's really good.
Excellent. Anything else? No, Chris has done a phenomenal job of this, yeah. Very good, can't take him enough. And, uh, I know same thing with the elementary projects, um, which is, you know, the, the next item, so what's that?
Let's move right into that.
Yeah, Chris has got the list, uh, up here. Um, and now hopefully, we, we didn't, we didn't put it in board docs, but, we're back.
No, sorry.
Um, if you're on Zoom, you can.
So, yeah, this is the remaining work to be done.
We can listen.
The top in yellow are the things that are underway right now. And we have the boiler Lily B. Uh, we're gonna be starting the work the week of April 12th, when spring breaks on. So that'll take care of the top two items on the list. Uh, we issued a purchase order back in the fall, uh, right before, you know, the asphalt plant's closed. So, uh, we're waiting for them to reopen, we'll get that done as soon as we have that availability as well. Uh, I think we're probably looking later April, based on what I've heard, um, before we get much, uh, chance of getting that done, which is fine. Um, we had, uh, the deluge panel and the sprinkler for the stages at Lily B redone, rebuilt. Uh, and that just needs its final testing, which is scheduled for later this month. The awning at Bionic Center School is being stitched. The locks, uh, I think 95% of them have been replaced. In a week or two, we'll finish the duct insulation over Flanders and the speakers, the PA system that was buzzing at Lily B Haynes should be done, I think, in, in the next week. So that only leaves us with, uh, an art room sink at Flanders, which I promised to put in. And then finishing the Haynes gym floor, which I'll put that back out to bid next month probably, and it'll be scheduled to start the week after school's out. And that's pretty much it. Um, and then these are all the other things that we did. So basically we had a pretty good, uh, CIP program here in the last year. Elementary school kept me busy, but. Elementary school kept me busy, but all in all, I think, uh, everybody's pretty happy with things turned out. Still working out, working out the bugs in the heating systems. I think we got, uh, 98% of those now, but we'll see when we go back to cooling again, how it works out. And other than that, uh, chasing a couple of leaks, uh, the Flanders still, which I think are related to a duct insulation that we have to repair. All in all, we're getting close to done.
Because what you found, just speaking with Lily B. Haynes, the heat was an issue then, just using that school in particular, you know, you turn it on in one room, the, you know, that room got colder and the next room over got hotter and some of the wiring was.
Yeah, so we, we, we found that one of the problem areas, which was the pre-K wing or the K wing? I'm sorry. Um, we had a couple of rooms that are really cold and then the next wing over, they're really hot. It was just a function of, oops, yeah, switch the wires. Um, so those types of issues, but all in all, I think we got it now.
Great. So that's all that's left then, yeah. The, uh. So there still will be a surplus. There still will be a surplus, yeah. To give back or not, not to have to borrow money, uh, again, so it's what projected. Was it about almost 200? Yeah, well, around 200,000. More than 200. Yeah, so that's, that's, that's fantastic. And we've. Building committee did, uh, has done a great job. And, uh, when, when do we then start to officially close the thing out then?
Sure. Um, once the building committee recommends that, that to the board for completion, the board would accept it as complete and then, um, I would begin filing the paperwork with the state.
So that would be when, Chris, when that list is all done, right?
Yep.
So it won't be all done until the end of the summer?
No, actually, I hope it'll be done by the end of fiscal year.
So the only. Okay, good.
Yeah, the only thing left to be done in the next week or two will be the floor, which schedule that as soon as school's out. That's a two-week job. That'll be it.
Good. How long does the closeout then take?
Um, no, the, about the paperwork, um, I, I would have to, like, um, I've chatted with Anna already. I'll just need, um, you know, to go down to the town hall and just kind of review all of the records. Though, the, the, the closeout paperwork is, is pretty extensive. And then, um, once that's filed, then, uh, the state will schedule an audit. And I believe that's typically within six months of them receiving the paperwork, they'll file an audit. And I think the audit, again, takes a couple of weeks to complete.
And it's because there's, the, the reason for asking all that is because they are still, they're holding money back.
Correct. Yep.
Until everything's filled out. I think it's supposed to be like 7%?
Um, yes, like seven and a half.
Seven and a half percent for the project. So that's why, that's why, you know, sooner we close out, the quicker we can balance, balance all the books here. So, okay, good. Excellent. All right?
Yep, that's it.
Great.
School projects.
Always raising a hand.
Okay, so that brings us now to, uh, some, oh, policies.
Policies.
Yeah, so we had a policy, uh, committee meeting, um, what was it? Jamie, last, last week?
Love it.
Yeah. And, uh, so there's four for first review. Did you, Jamie, all?
Also, all of them. So just a reminder for everyone, if you don't, if you haven't done this in a while, uh, policy has a first reading and then 30 days later, we have a second reading. We get feedback and then at the second reading is when we vote on whether or not to approve the modification. So this is just the first reading of what we talked about. So the first policy is 6121, um, equal education opportunity. This is a suggested deletion of policy because it is contained in other policies. The next one is, uh, first review of policy 1411 and it's called, uh, Law Enforcement Agency Community, Community Relations Law Enforcement Agency. I don't know if you've had a chance to read it, but it is a, a relatively short policy, um, about police and other law enforcement and our buildings and relationships. Um, the next policy is a suggested deletion called Student Welfare. Um, I will make a comment based on the public comment that we got. Um, sometimes, uh, agencies like DCF or Calmentor School, and we do not have to notify parents and we cannot notify parents of that at times because it could be an investigation on the parent. So that is one of the reasons why that's there.
Yeah, this policy stayed in place. It would completely violate the DCF policy, basically. Yes, it's an old 1999 policy.
That, just so you have a little bit of background on why we talked about that one. Um, and suggested policy 5141231, it is students' psychical drug use. This is a policy that we have, but we're making some revisions to it. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, but now is your chance to do that. And that is that.
Yeah, and that one, that one, we had talked about pros and cons for keeping it or deleting it.
We did talk about pros and cons of keeping it or deleting it. Um, and my pro is keeping it was so that it was written down that teachers, it's not their job to be recommending psychical drug use for children. Um, it's not in the purview, that is in the expert's drug use purview, to be talking about that with students. That was our argument to keep it. Um.
But they can recommend, as it says, to be evaluated.
They can recommend to be evaluated.
Because they might see something that.
See something a parent doesn't see, you know, but they shouldn't be making that recommendation to.
Right.
Your child who needs A D D medication, that's not within it.
Good. Okay, so those are first readings. Anybody have any questions or comments for Jamie?
Let me see any.
Nope, okay. Okay, so that completes the discussion action items for the evening and we can move on to administration reports. Our superintendent, Mr. Uli?
Um, just, uh, much of our, you know, work has been around, you know, the prep and logistics for, for reopening, but just a DEI, uh, update. Um, so we are working to try and schedule the next ad hoc committee meeting so, um, we can have some further conversations about the strategic plan and, uh, that the legal representation, um, is Jessica Ritter, our attorney, who's reviewing it. Um, so we would work with her at, at that next meeting. Um, so we're still in the process. I know we're working on dates, so we're, we're still working on that to get that meeting scheduled. So stay tuned there. I did, uh, talk with Carla, uh, today from the Equity Institute, um, as they are a nonprofit organization. They're not a for-profit organization. They're a nonprofit organization, um, just to be clear on that, because that did come up as, as well. Um, and, uh, she's putting together all the dates for, uh, work from basically really the middle to end of March, straight through to July. So I'll, I'll kind of have that comprehensive list of, of dates. Uh, just, she just sent me the MOU as well. Um, you know, we're looking at the stakeholders and getting those dates together. So we'll be pushing that information out. Um, so the meeting on the 22nd that we have will be, we should be having some discussion about that process.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah.
Um, with regards to the public comments, um, you, are, are you going to send out a formal letter to parents letting them know this audit is coming out?
Exactly.
Are you giving the parents slash students the ability to, uh, out?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. They, I asked that.
You would be doing that, but just maybe.
Most definitely. And I, and, uh, I asked that question to, uh, to Carla, um, this, uh, this morning we spoke, um, as it pertains to, um, the template letters. They have template letters that they use, so, you know, it's, it's consistency. Um, so I'd be looking at those. We would modify as we see necessary and send out. Yep.
Wanted to address that in the public.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, when it comes to surveying, you know, parents have that every right to, to not participate.
Sure.
So definitely. Um, so that's, that's really, that's, we'll have FFO. Um, next meeting, we got Board of Finance. There's a Board of Finance meeting this Wednesday. We'll share out some information as we did tonight on the COVID expenses, so they're aware. And, um, I think that's, that's pretty much, that's it that I have.
Now, this Wednesday, so it's going to be a budget review or no?
No, 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 the, the, no, not this, this, uh, our budget review with the Board of Finance is April 8th.
Okay.
Scheduled for April 8th, yeah. So, um, I don't know if we have final confirmation on that yet.
Oh, you've got Anna.
That you can, okay, all right. I know we were toying with, with the dates.
She was saying that.
Good. So we're planning April for that presentation. We'll work through FFO for that. But yeah, this Wednesday's just their standard meeting and we'll share the COVID expenses again as we've done in the past. So.
Assistant Superintendent, Amy?
So I may not have met my match milestone today, but I met a cohort milestone today. I wrote my 1,400th cohort email. So I have done 1,400 cohort emails back and forth to parents. Um, right now, we are standing at 389 virtual Vikings. We were at 425, just to give you some comparison perspectives. So right now, we're at 389. We have 110 at the elementary as of right now. We have a hu, which is down from 160. So that means we have 50 students that, that are back across our three elementaries. So I just, I'm going to give you some comparison so that will help you. Our middle school right now has 120 virtual Vikings. That's down from 139. Um, so that's 19 kiddos that we, we have back. And then our high school is up. Our high school is at 159 and it was at 147. So we've had 12 kids go out. Um, so that's just sort of comparison, just so that you're there. So all in all, if you think about our virtual Viking numbers in comparison to our current enrollment, you have 2,218 kids that are in and you have 389 that are virtual Vikings, okay? I do want to talk to you for a minute though, around circumstances right now with families, around the virtual Viking in particular. So there's a couple of trends that we're seeing, okay? So we're seeing some parents that might be waiting until after April break because they're trying to see what's that going to look like or let me buy a little bit of time, get those other kids in, see how it goes, see where cases go. So that's one trend that we're seeing. Another trend that we're seeing is some of our students aren't happy with the idea of coming back. They feel that the parents in them feel they are very successful right now as a virtual Viking and they feel that this model might have served their child well right now and that might be why they're not moving. The third piece that we're seeing is travel. So we have families traveling, we have families going on vacation and because of vacation, you know, they might be doing something at April break. Rather than have my kid come in, then I'm going to pull him out, then they might need to quarantine, then to pull him out. I'm just keeping them out until that window happens. Or we have situations where we have families that have events occurring, death in the family, needing to care for, uh, parents, uh, parents of their own. Um, we have students virtually learning from us all over, to be honest with you right now. And we are being very flexible and supportive with our families. We are saying, your kid's a Viking, they're with us, we will be willing to support whatever you need during this time. So just to give you like, as far as a virtual Viking, those are some trends that we're seeing as to why some of those students might not be coming back onsite, if I had to sort of categorize what we're seeing, if you will. Um, the other pieces I just wanted to also revisit is one of the conversations we're having at secondary and elementary admin this week is we're talking about universal clarity around what it means to be in school five days a week in 2021 post-pandemic and making sure it's very clear for teachers, the expectation of, uh, the use of technology within the classrooms, the expectation on a Wednesday. What does it mean to plan for a 30-minute instructional block versus an 85-minute? What are some of the resources we need to support teachers with? But making sure it's really clear to parents, your kid is in school five days a week. Five full days a week, there's an academic expectation. So one of the pieces that we'll be reviewing, I have a committee of teachers who work with me. They went ahead and adjusted some of these expectations. So we'll be working with administrators and then getting those out to parents. And one of the conversations we've had is, uh, we'll be documenting and communicating to parents, whether it be a video nature, so that all the parents are hearing the same message and making sure it's really clear instructurally and, um, we know that they need to hear that from us, that, that it's sort of solid, if you will. So, um, those are just sort of two cohort changes. And then I think it's important to note that we have, we have some families throughout this year who are really, really struggling. Their child's struggling, uh, there might be some medical, uh, needs. Um, there's a lot of diagnoses of students' needs and things occurring right now. And I think that's one thing we just are trying to, so when Deb's talking about that advisory tied to lunch or when Jason's talking about his rotated model, there is a piece of this where there's got to be some really intense eyes wide open when these kids come back, four and or five. Um, I mean, we visited the, so some of the elementary classrooms, even in the transition. I'm watching a kindergarten teacher literally introduce two students to the school. I mean, they've never walked and they're like, like looking around like it's Disney World, right? So I mean, there is a transition period for our kids. That's real. And the four-day, which is why we really view the four-day as it's a four-day onsite transitional model to get you to the five days. Cause they're done, I mean, I watched a teacher literally flip her easel chart to the chart from the second day of school in September because she's like, we're having some traffic problems. You guys have never had a room filled with 15 peers before and now you're all bunking each with each other. We can't do that. So let's have that conversation. And so that tran, the transition of the four-day is real. That's just all I'm saying. Um, but with a really solid intention of the five-day and then the, it's coming back, but it's a new normal. And that's one of the things we're trying to message to our teachers, that, and our parents, is that the instructional model post-pandemic isn't the instructional model pre-pandemic. So making sure that that's solid and clear. So.
Just mention too, and the fact that, you know, we have had requests, parents kind of think, well, you know what? Two days is good for me. Or you know what? I like three days a week versus four or five.
Yeah.
So we, we've, we've got some pushback in that sense too, that no, this is, we're four days and then we're five days back in full. It's not a three-day option. It's no longer a two-day option. We're four days and then five days back. I know you've kind of.
Yeah, yeah, there's, yeah, I had a couple of parents who are like, I like my kid Justin B. I'm like, well, B's dead. And your B wants to come back. So it's really four days of virtual. And for some parents, that's like, ooh, that's a real difference to me. Whereas that A B provided a happy medium. So that, um, we're helping navigate. And honestly, this is where I'm leaning on our counselors right now at the middle and high school, big time, to say, why don't you reach out to this parent, talk about their child's wellness because you know them best and which model would really benefit them during this time as they sort of come in. But yeah, it's hard to communicate out. There's really only two pathways now, if we think about it. You're either virtual or you're not. And even, we even had the conversation, what do you call the five-dayers? They're like Viking five? You're like, what? They know that, they're good.
We have put so much on teachers.
No, no.
Yeah, just, it would, it would be awful for teachers to try and, you know, three days, two days. I mean, they'd, they'd go crazy.
Yeah, and it's hard, I mean, it continues to be hard. I mean, I, I cohort every morning and every night and it's really, it's, I try to give 48 hours to our teachers. It's really hard to do though, when I have a parent who is so uncomfortable with their kid coming in. I can't tell that parent to wait and have their kid not learn for a day, right? So then I'm making a change for a teacher and tomorrow they're coming in. I'm like, okay, I guess they're not in. They're virtual today, all right? And that adaptability is, has to be pretty quick in some cases. Or there's a sense of urgency with a case where, okay, this kid is going through a trauma. Their sibling needs, is having this impact. We need to move on this relatively quickly. So I can't wait the 48. So now the teacher's finding out a switch, if you will. So I, I'm seeing hands. Can I?
Yeah. Are you anticipating an uptick of in-person cohort changes after April break? I know you mentioned.
Yeah.
I bet they will be.
I am, I am projecting that my high school virtual Vikings are going to go down and I'm going to see an increase of high school students onsite.
Yeah.
I am.
And is there, are there like certain cutoff dates or is that going to still be rolling throughout these next 10 weeks?
So right now, my only cutoff date is on freezing Viking floors. So right now, people can't request to come four days a week, um, because we're transitioning into a four-day-a-week model unless they're a student with an I U P because we had sort of stated that in regards to I U P or there, there is some type of criteria that creates an urgency. But that all goes through a name, which is why that's important, that it goes through one person. So the y's and m's are always going back to the same criteria. Yep.
Eric?
Uh, thanks, Amy. That was really helpful.
So how, what are we thinking, and if it's premature, I'm happy for you to defer, but in terms of next year, are you looking to have offer two virtual Viking and Viking five or whatever you want to call it? Or are we hoping that it's Viking five days, uh normal, maybe with masks or whatever, but kind of back to normal or what's the thinking?
Yeah, so I can tell my fellow assistant superintendent, Sarah and I are hoping that it's just five days and it's not virtual. And that we are instead honing in on what are opportunities kids can have on campus that could be virtual. So are there courses that we could have virtual? Are there some integrated experience and make that the focus rather? I mean, literally, the virtual Viking, especially at the elementary, we made the decision that that was developmentally appropriate. But to go back and forth and have teachers have to adapt to that, it's, you're, we're teaching in a transient population, which has never been our case, so.
Okay, so I'm really glad to hear that. I think we, if we can make sure our parents understand that in September kind of school as we knew it pre-COVID.
Yeah.
To an extent. Because, so if I had my children virtual Viking and I knew in September that's not going to be around anymore, I might be like, well, at least get them back, get them used to this, you know, a couple of months to get used to it versus September. You know, all of a sudden, you haven't been in school in a year and all of a sudden you're popping back, at least you have a little couple of months of getting back into it. So I don't know, but it'd be nice for parents to understand that.
Yeah, unfortunately, so much is in our political landscape because we don't have a, we don't have a commissioner and so much of that is going to be on their.
They'll see the state.
Yes, because they're the ones, they're the ones who told us we had to offer the virtual.
Yeah.
And that's why we're maintaining it.
That's right, yeah. So if they, they, we're waiting to hear that information from them. We keep pushing them and we're pushing them, pushing the legislators. You know, we need to know, are we going to have to offer that again, you know, next year? And if we do, we will, but you know, obviously, we, we want everybody back onsite.
And I love the idea of leveraging tech, using the virtual to leverage technology.
When they're on campus, yeah.
Excellent, excellent, very good. That is Amy.
I even have hands over here.
I'm sorry, oh, I didn't see that. I'm trying to watch.
We're not taking it personal, Jamie, if you want to go ahead.
So my question is S-BAC.
Yes.
I hate it and I despise it.
Let's talk about it.
And I hate it and despise it even more this year. The normal. Why? Why are we doing it? These kids have had the worst year and I know we're mandated to do it, but why can't they figure it out that it's just not going to be right this year?
So the message really that the State Department is really saying that these assessments are really being done for really two reasons. One is to understand the actual impact of the pandemic on student growth. And then also the fact that they lost their benchmark, if you will, last year. So they need somewhere to start reallocation of funding. So the message has really been two-fold, like we need to understand the impact, but then we also need to know how are we moving funding forward? And we need to start somewhere because we skipped over a year. So, and then the remote piece of it is they, we are going to see a delay in us getting um scores back because they are also, the third part is they're running a little bit of a study on remote test takers versus onsite test takers. And it could offer a potential opportunity or, but G at the State Department has sort of said, you know, that's sort of a third part, sort of this case study. Because like I told you in the weekly update, we, we've never remotely proctored S-BAC or the science assessment at the high school level. We're doing it for the first time this year, which is why, again, we will be asking our virtual Viking students at the beginning of April, you need to commit. Are you taking this assessment? Because our top priority is we must offer all virtual Viking students the opportunity to come in and test onsite. Should they then decide that they do not feel comfortable doing that, then we test them remotely. But we cannot just jump to testing them remotely until we offer them the opportunity to come onsite. And then, but we're going to ask parents and you, this is completely, we do, we're going to ask parents to choose, do you want your child tested onsite or do you want them tested remotely? And then those numbers will completely dictate what environments do we have to have ready? What staff do we have to have tested? Because our biggest non-negotiable during this whole time is we are not pulling staff away from students. So the last thing you want is a parent to send their student back to school and then Bill finds out that his son hasn't had his English teacher for two days because the English teacher has been proctoring. So that's why we need to know sort of those numbers and that's why, like, April, we were going back and forth of, do we ask, get that number before April vacation or after? Because now we're seeing this April vacation conversation.
Do we have to have a half the student population go out after April vacation because they decided to?
Correct. Correct, but we need to plan, our schools have to plan because we want to plan a secure and safe environment for those stu-, I mean, we have students who haven't been in at all this year. So for them to even walk in and take an assessment, it needs to be pretty.
And so then my second part of that is, do we have a number of how many virtual Vikings would have to be taking this S-BAC test? We don't know that yet.
For third to eighth grade?
Yeah.
Yeah, so altogether for third to eighth grade, I'd be looking at 180 kids that would need to be taking S-BAC remotely. And at the high school, I'm looking at 57 alone girls that would have to take the N G S S remotely, the science assessment.
Wow, okay.
The population. Candace?
Okay, so I just wanted to note that, you know, through this entire challenge that even knowing we've hit so many bumps and had to readjust ourselves and shift and change and do all these different things, one of the many things that the district has really gotten right was giving options to people and being accommodating and constantly, constantly. I mean, thousands of emails, I am most certain. And the dedication and commitment that not just you, but your team have put into that to really try to help navigate students and families has been immeasurable. It really truly has. And I know that sometimes folks focus on some of the negatives, but that has really been a key point that has really helped so many here in this district. And I listened to you and just so many things that you were saying are just so powerful. And one specific as the expectation of now coming back to school and what that really looks like. Because there are many that don't know or have forgotten what that really looks like. I thought that was really powerful and I just really wanted to, 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 to say it.
Yeah, thanks, Candace. Excellent, excellent. Okay. Yeah, just like, make sure Barry or Joe or Kate, anything, any questions for Amy?
I think I can.
Amy, thank you for that report, I really appreciate it. One article I was reading recently talked about closing the gap and maybe this is a Kim question, too, was having some tutoring made available. And they said extending the school day by 30 minutes would be really helpful for helping the kids. I didn't know, learning what potential outcome gaps may have occurred and helping so perhaps a high school kid working with a middle school or middle schooler working with an elementary student. Which is kind of, again, thinking outside of the box, problem solving of different ways. But they're saying that, like, the summer program may not be enough to remedy the loss of academic gain that should have occurred during the school year. So any thoughts on that?
So I'll, I'll just answer on this and Kim can answer, but I'm looking at Jason Beckett because we attempted to offer sort of a similar service at the middle school where, you know, because we were starting to hear some feedback in regards to middle school parents looking for homework club and trying to look at that as an option. And we did not get a single interested party. So part of that feedback and one of the things I think, and Jason, I don't want to steal your thunder reporting out, but one of the pieces that we've heard from parents is, you know, almost getting my kid in, make, having them make it through that day successfully, coming home is about where my, the comfort level is for us right now. But that is not to say that virtual tutoring could not be an option for students. So one of the things that we have, which is great, is we receive through Pfizer, we receive a list of targeted tutors that our high school counselors have and then they're able to match up high school students with those tutors, should they be available, if the tutor is comfortable offering virtual. So that is an opportunity and something that is free to our students that we are able to utilize. But I, I will say, having been CC'd on quite a few guidance counselor, there's a lot of parents who are sort of given a little bit of like, my kid's barely making it through their academic day. So some of those services are being offered, but we're getting a little bit of, and to be honest with you, Kate, as we're getting deeper and deeper into the summer conversation, that is even starting to grow as a concern to me that we might even have some parents be like, after the school year like this? I do not know that my kid is going to be able to take this on. Or I don't know if I want to argue with my kid all summer long. So there has been some of that talk. But it's not to say that it's not something that we're constantly looking into offer our students. So I, I wrote it down as something that we can continue to offer, Kate, so thank you.
And I, I know, I know you're a divergent thinker and a problem solver. So I just read that article and I thought, well, that's interesting. We hadn't really talked about that, but apparently you, you guys did behind the scenes, so anyway.
Awesome. Thank you, Kate.
Great, excellent. Okay. All right. Well, Barry. Barry, Barry.
One quick comment on that, I've been involved in some discussions at the state level. There's some very creative and interesting programs coming down that schools are going to be able to access going forward for summer programs that are not replicates of school days or tutoring and things like that. There's some very, very creative options come out to enhance and accelerate students over the summer months to kind of make up what's happened over the year. So just, we're going to stay tuned and see what those programs actually turn out to be. But neutral conversations that I found to be very exciting.
Excellent, excellent, great. Okay.
All right.
Diana, anything good?
Yeah, just one update. Um, yeah, I talked a while back and then it kind of got put on hold because of COVID, but the facility use software that is right now up and running for internal. And I went and trained the person at Park and Rec that does all the Park and Rec stuff. So it's great, I can, I, because I think Candace, maybe you had asked once, can I get a report of, you know, whatever, what different organizations are using? So right now, it's just internal because we haven't put up, really aren't doing the building use for outside people, but that will be also, it's set up. And it'll be a link and then they'll, they'll get approval and it makes a great invoicing. So, so it's, it's, it's working well internally. So hopefully, when we open it up to the public, we'll put the link up.
Good, excellent. Excellent. Great, thanks for bringing that up. Okay, that's it for the administrative reports, committee reports. Um, we have policy meeting, bless you. No, you said bless you.
We pretty much covered everything tonight. We did talk about, I don't know if it would be policy or if it's something that we would do a triple A, but we were talking about putting together some kind of partnership with EB and Pfizer. Maybe, because some of the other schools have like a partnership internship. So we were talking about it, a policy is something that we wanted to look into, but we didn't know if it was a policy or a triple A thing. But we thought it would be a really good thing for us to be working on.
Okay.
Okay, good. All right, that brings us to board comments, the future agenda topics. And Jamie, we did, we went and kind of summed it up. Jeff and I went through the future agenda topic, so. Yeah, so. We'll keep updating those.
Too sure how to navigate that.
I know it was different, I was like, oh, wait.
So we got comments here, anybody on the, wait, Kate, let's do the Zoom folks first, so. Kate, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Before I start, though, I, I would really like to hear from our elementary principals if that's okay, how are things going from your perspective? Because you're the ones living the dream of back to school with COVID-19.
Hi Kate, it's Jeff, how are you?
Hi Jeff.
Good, thanks for asking. Yeah, we're, we're doing pretty well. Biggest problem at, at Nyanaque is traffic. We're having a lot of issues with bus drop-offs and pickups. Chris Olson was down this afternoon. We changed some of the, the traffic patterns. We're going to actually have parents, starting on Thursday, picking up their kids underneath the main entrance of the building and we're going to walk the buses out the side door, try to create some more space out front because we had a line of parents getting out into the road, you know, actually standing where we're waiting to pick up. We, I sent out an email this morning, we're going to start parking our staff out back in the, on the grass out there, off the parking lot because our kids use that blacktop. But we're going to have that top gate area open for, for teachers to leave, if they need to leave during the day. But we're going to try to create more space in the afternoon for pickup because there's just not enough parking spots and people are parking at Telly and crossing the street and over at the weight clinic. And, you know, hopefully, we can get, you know, parents maybe feel more comfortable in the future to come back to the buses. But that, that's the biggest issue is in terms of the kids in the building. They've been great, the teachers are great. Everything is set up, you know, in terms of Plexiglas. Chris, you know, Lund did a great job getting that stuff in. Our custodial staff did a phenomenal job, you know, getting it placed throughout the building. And so that part's been good, a little less social distancing. But again, you know, we had talked about the CDC, you know, and, and some of their guidance in terms of masks are the real, you know, mitigating factor. Social distancing, when feasible, is great, but the masks are the big thing. So we're, we're doing well with that. And our, you know, Chris Urban and the three principals met on lunches, that's going really well. We're still delivering the lunches to the tables. So the kids are not standing in line back to back, you know, front to back that way. So, so far, so good. You know, really concerned about second grade and third grade and what that impact is on the traffic, which is why we're trying to get in front of it. And Chris and I made some changes this afternoon, thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay.
I'll just say, you know, Jeff, you did a nice job. At Lilly B, thankfully, we don't have any traffic issues because we use the access road. That goes between up in the middle school. So everything has gone extremely smoothly. There's not a single thing I would change. Nice to have the students back and it's really gone without a hitch. So I don't anticipate any problems with the return of second, third, or fourth grade either. So I'm glad we're doing it and I think it's going really well.
Fabulous.
And I can add, Melissa said, everything's going well at Flanders. We also have not had any traffic, you know, issues, but we are monitoring really closely as we bring, you know, additional kids back, what that looks like for parent drop-off and pickup and, you know, buses and whether or not we'll have to change some things. So we're monitoring that. The lunchrooms, you know, we were just really getting used to the flow of, you know, additional students. So that's been going well. I think the kids are really happy to be back, we're so happy to have them. It was really cute. At the end of last week, I was walking behind one of the kindergarten classes at the end of the day and there were, you know, a couple of kids hanging back and like, you know, aren't we ready to go? And they're like, we're tired. So after a full week of doing that, I worked so hard, but it was really cute and I'm just so excited to have them back.
We'll hand off to you guys for pulling it off and doing that, that's beautiful. The comment I wanted to make is that I, I was on a call, it was yesterday, and it was with the League of Women Voters and it was the curator and her name is Joan Di Martino. And she's the curator for the Prudence Candle Home. And I just think it's such an amazing museum that we have here in Connecticut. It's in Canterbury, so not far away. But they have beautiful tours that they do virtually. And given our D E I, diversity, equity and inclusion that we're working on this year, you know, it was one of the first homes or institutions that taught women of color at a higher level. And, you know, she tells the story of how people would throw rocks in the building and she would just take the rocks and pile them up on her mantle and make a Karen, you know, just like you see when you go hiking through the woods. And kind of just saying, you know, we'll build back and, you know, we're not going to let this deter us. And her determination was amazing, but she's doing some outreach right now. And I mentioned that I was on the board on this call. And I mentioned that I was on the board on this call. And it just would be a good link, I think, especially for you, Jason, and I don't see Deb on the call anymore. But, you know, middle school, high school, I just think, you know, active learning, authentic, here in our state, it's a national museum kind of thing. So just wanted to give you an FYI, and I thought that was a, a real good opportunity for us or for, yeah, for our school system. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Great, Kate, very good, excellent. We see you, Deb, we urge you. Barry, go ahead.
A quick comment, if related to questions about the possible survey that the Equity Institute might do on the committee. We had, we did a great deal of work on the content validity of the psychometric properties, issues like sampling error as related to that survey. And I think we vetted those pretty well. But if there are future questions, I think that we could simply, you know, if people have a question, just ask them to us and we can tell them how we address the psychometric properties of the possible survey.
Good, excellent, thanks Barry. Okay, Ralph, so D.
So mine is a Miracle League update.
Oh.
So in case anyone doesn't know, we have finished the field. It looks beautiful, if anyone hasn't got out there, I suggest you go out there, it's gorgeous. But our website is up and running, it's mlscc.org. We are currently doing signups for sports. And we are, we have kids from Madison all the way to Westerly to Preston. We have so many kids sign up, it is so awesome to see so many kids and families sign up and excited. Going baseball, kickball, lacrosse. And I'm going to forget the other ones, but lacrosse. And we have our I can bike going on also for August at the middle school. We're hoping, our fingers are crossed, Dave said he's hoping to get the dates. But we are also doing advertising, we're selling our banners on the Little League wall, like they do at the middle, behind the middle school. And we are following the Board of Ed advertising policy because it's on board property. So we're working that in, if anyone wants to buy a banner or wants to volunteer, that's all up on our website as a signups for all the sports. So we're also looking to volunteers, if anybody has anyone from twelve on up, if they want to volunteer, the volunteer boards are on there too.
Alexandra, she really enjoyed volunteering.
We are so excited, we are doing so well, we're at the fields, it's beautiful, I'm not waiting to have a season.
That's great, Jamie, they're going to have another, kind of, they have that one kind of open, open house.
We haven't, we haven't talked about another one, but I'm sure we will.
You will. Yeah, something more grandiose, yeah. Yeah, exactly, yep, get into that.
We can have another big one, but we are going to hold all of our sports and we are, we're going to do a I can dance kind of field out there, but out at the field.
Nice, nice.
Spring, fall, and summer.
Good.
Spring, summer, three seasons out on the field for dance.
All right, good, good.
Eric? Okay, I have a list. So it's a whole mix. So first, streaming games, so thank you, Deb, I got the rank to streaming games. It is something that I'm enjoying, I miss live sports, but I've enjoyed. The best thing about it is I can actually, this is very sad, I have nothing better to do in my life, but I can't take two places at once, but I can watch two games. I can stream them both and overlap, so, and I have done that, sad to say. It's nice when the half times don't align and I can watch them all and all the others in the halftime, so thank you for that. So sports in the spring are showing our eye.
Yeah.
Have we, I don't know, that's the question, it's a future discussion, but what's going to be the policy on attendance at sports?
Hasn't been decided yet, yeah, ECC will be looking through that. I anticipate they'll allow, you know, some portions of people or families to be there.
It is one of the reasons why I've got so good guys to people, because they need to be here by March twenty seventh.
Yes, yeah.
Well, the more we can do, if there's anything we can do to also not only have fans, especially on the field sports. Where our stands hold a thousand people or so, so I mean, we can at least somewhat, and if they're willing to wear masks, allow them to. If there's anything we can do, I think that'd be great, because again, just trying to get some help there. The next, kind of, for its length, but not exactly. So I don't know if anyone saw, but the boys' basketball team had this like video put together that's really cool. And it, it made me think, it's like basketball, yeah, it's like highlights, but also showcase the kids and it's music, you know.
I know what you're talking about, yes.
It's like a minute and a half or so, really good.
I was a student, probably a student, big a student.
Yeah, I don't, I know who did it, or I don't know the person, but I know the name, but I don't want to.
Grant says yes, thumbs up.
Okay, I don't want to.
It wasn't great.
Hannah Hines was.
Yes, yes, okay. So I didn't know if I'm allowed to say, so anyway, really well done.
Yep.
So Jamie, thinking is, should we have a marketing video for our schools? But if, if something like that can be put together, it would be really nice to have that done for our schools. And then, I mean, link it to, now I'm streaming high school sports, but I'm streaming college sports because I really, anyway. If you watch at halftime of college.
This is television.
Oh, yeah. My light's going to kill me. And if you're watching college sports at halftime, they all throw their marketing videos.
Yes, true.
That are really well done. Why couldn't we do that at the halftime of our?
Sporting events.
That, that might be complicated, but just to showcase, it's really, it can be short and it, it's very effective when it's well done. So, and I know Candace has talked about our marketing, marketing, marketing. It might seem like something that, wow, that was done, I don't know how much time it took, but, you know, it was really well done. It seems like that we should be able to do something to showcase our schools and our students, not just the high school, but all our schools. Okay, last, this is the biggest one, that is probably a future agenda item. So I guess I'd like to understand, we have all these, we had advisory and other, I probably lost track what we do at, definitely at middle school and high school and maybe, yes, or extent, elementary. Like what are we doing to help students with life skills and including, you know, coping and dealing with stuff? And kind of goes on the mental health aspect. Like we, we've invested in more psychologists and other VCBAs, and I'll mess up all the acronyms, but we have more, which is great. I think, is that more, you know, almost, you know, Chris has stepped out, but, you know, what we've done is you wait till something isn't broken and then you send in a counselor and fix it. And are there things we should be doing for all students? Because all students, everybody goes through tough situations in life and how do you deal with that? And is there more that we can do in kind of our normal classes? You know, just as important as learning, you know, civics might be, how do I deal with a tough situation? And more likely, you're going to have to deal with a tough situation in life and maybe they have to deal with civics. So if there's something, so I'd like to know what we're doing now, so I probably lost track. And then see, you know, potentially, is there more we can do?
Would you see that as a board agenda topic or would it be triple A?
It'd be triple A.
Yes, it's a triple A, yep, and Kim, you know, the S E L committee, the District Committee, definitely bring forward the different things that are happening now. And what we want to, you know. That's a great, great suggestion there.
Okay, then my last thing, so.
I thought you said that one was the last.
No, that was my last big one, just a quick one. It was a real quick one. In terms of instant documents on board docs.
Oh, yep.
I thought I read it, it wasn't on my list. I'm, I must be looking too early. Because I, Saturday morning was my time to look. And there's a lot that got posted after that, or didn't, I don't, it's not loading, but I didn't see, you know, my question about the, you know, how many people. No, but there, but it was there, but it wasn't there when I looked. So either, I can look any ti-, I mean, over the weekend, I can look anytime, I'm, I'm real flexible. So, but I just need to know when it's loading. So you have to get a note that says, okay, everything's loaded or most things are loaded, or something new is, even if it's Monday morning and you say, hey, something new dropped in.
Yeah.
At least then I, because I like to go back and look, like I look Saturday morning, figure everything's there. And then if it's not, I'm like, oh, yeah, I'm good, and then I come here. And I, I mean, I miss, I don't mind if you wrote something late, I just need to know.
Yeah, that, that makes perfect sense, yeah, because we do, we do that sometimes on a Monday. Yep, and Jackie, when she does it, when, you know, whenever she just makes that addition, she can just, just hit it. Hit it automatic, you know, big zigzag thing, say there's something new's been added. Yep.
Technology would actually automatically alert me that something is new to the board. There's a lot of software, if you put the notification, you accept that, it's just, so you don't have to do anything, then I would just, I can get the alert and others may not do, but it's fine.
Yep.
Yep.
That's great, we can fix that, yeah, that's a good point.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So with Andy, would anybody like to make a motion?
Candace, can it? All those who gave a promotion signify by saying hi. Excellent, and I think this worked out pretty well. I think this worked out too, yeah, I think everybody can do this.
I'll see everybody.